You in communication?
Will do. Will do.
She's really upset, she wants to be here.
Oh, they're gonna get the test scores.
I just told you.
Oh, you got a place.
Go ahead.
Beautiful. You have awesome views.
Do you still stand up?
We stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to request a moment of silence for the following individuals. Michael E. Disk, a graduate of North Syracuse Central School District. Virginia Rayner, a retired teacher in the North Syracuse School District. And Ronald Shannon, a 1956 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Crabtree.
I just would like to talk about one of the people tonight. Virginia Rayner, a retired teacher that just passed away last week, was a former colleague of mine at Main Street Elementary, when Main Street School was kindergarten through fifth grade. She taught third grade. She had a smile on her face every morning as those students came in her classroom. I was very young at the time, I was in my twenties, and I learned a lot from her. One of her specialties was birds. She loved to do books and plays and stories about birds. And when she retired in 1983, I borrowed those books until my last years of teaching, I used them. She was a marvelous teacher in the North Syracuse Central School District.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Our only presentation this evening is our August graduation. And I just wanted to apologize to the graduates of August 2012. Because normally, we have this ceremony at the high school where you're able to walk across the stage and you're able to proceed into the auditorium like your graduate friends and family that graduated in June. Due to the fact that we felt that it was important that this meeting be streamed live so that all could see it if they wished, we were incapable of making that happen at the high school. And unfortunately, the junior high school wasn't available, so we had to have the meeting here. And with that said, I do not want it to diminish your accomplishment in one iota because you children did a wonderful job. And it is not easy to do the work to graduate in August. It's very, very easy to say, well, I'm not gonna do this, it's, I just don't need it. And you gentlemen made the tough choices and you did the hard work to get here tonight. So I just wanted to say that. I don't want this to diminish your experience and your accomplishments at all. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Melissa Julian, the Executive Principal of CNS.
I'm speaking to Mike. Good evening, everybody. My name is Melissa Julian and I'm the Executive Principal at CNS. Tonight, we will be recognizing 10 of our students who were able to graduate in August, three of which are here tonight for this celebration. So with that, please give them a round of applause. As Mr. Crabtree says, it's not easy to come back in the summertime and get the work done that you need to get done. So we want to recognize you three tonight for your efforts. Dr. Dice, do you want to wish them well?
I'd just like to say how proud we are of you tonight. As Patton indicated, it's truly difficult to complete your high school requirements during the summer, but you all did that. And so we're truly excited for you. We are thankful to the parents because you have afforded us the opportunity to have some amazing students in our district. And we look forward to many great things from you. So don't forget us and continue to come back and let us know about the great things that you all are doing. Congratulations.
I would like to call up the three House Principals who will help me award the diplomas. Ms. Cindy Van Giesen, House Three. Mr. Joseph Dahara, House Two. And Ms. Solomon, House One. Mr. Nathan Bayless. Mr. Michael Burquess. Mr. Josh Neill. I'd also like to recognize those who could not be here today for various other reasons. Gregory Capers. Tricia Chirupin. Nicholas Coleman. Destiny Hodgman. Michael Hyde. CJ Johnston. And Anthony Revo. And just why we'd like the graduates and their families to join us across the hall for some brief refreshments.
This is all tape. Thank you. I got it. Come on. I got it.
At this time, we, it's a section of our meeting for comments from the audience. I just would ask, I know that many of the folks wishing to speak have called the District Clerk and spoke to the District Clerk relative to protocol and whatnot. So what I would like to just tell you is that we hold this meeting as a public meeting, but it is not an open forum. So if you have any questions for us or have anything that you'd like us to answer, my recommendation would be to get a request to the District Clerk and we'll be, we'll get back to you as quickly as we possibly can with an answer, if we can give you one. Also, again, because of the format, we allow 30 minutes for comments from the audience. We allow 10 speakers at three minutes apiece. You know, in the past, when we understand that it's difficult to express yourself sometimes in three minutes or less, and we realize that issues are important to you as well as they are to us, so we'll try to keep you as close to the three minutes as we possibly can. We sometimes, in an effort to accommodate, we have allowed for a little bit more time in the past, but we have a large number of speakers. We would invite those who did not get a chance to speak to come to another board meeting because we have this section of the meeting at every meeting. So understanding that only 10 people can speak this evening, if more wish to speak, you are certainly welcome to come back at another board meeting. So with that, the first speaker is Bill Butler. We would ask, Bill, that you come up to the mic and try to talk into the mic because the people out in, that are watching us stream it, they turn away from the mic, it messes with the sound a little bit, so welcome.
This one right here?
Yep, either one. Yep.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for allowing me to speak. My name is Bill Butler, I'm from Homer. I've been associated with softball for over 50 years, different capacities, and Division One coach. I was asked to speak at this board meeting concerning a conversation that I had with Mr. Paul at the Carrier Dome on March 2012 during the Syracuse University softball preseason tournament. The reason for this is to indicate that there may have been a problem between Mr. Paul, with Mr. Paul and Coach Bennett. Mr. Paul informed me that this was Kerry's last season. He was, he had retired from the school system and it was time for a change. I left believing that Coach Bennett was retiring at the end of the year and that this was his last year. I'm not gonna say anymore about this conversation, I'm gonna leave it up to the following speakers because they know more about the situation than I do. With that being said, I would like to express my views about Coach Bennett and his coaching staff. Since being on a Division One coaching staff for the last 15 years, I have seen many, many of Coach Bennett's games, taking a look and recruiting some of his players. And through this time, for the 15 years, I have never seen Coach Bennett or any of his staff do anything that was unprofessional. Over the weekend, I also talked with a couple other Division One coaches and their feeling is the same. My belief that athletics is nothing but an extension of the classroom. And I believe that CNS does their utmost to hire the best teachers available. A coach is nothing but a teacher. And you should hire the best. If you allow Coach Bennett to leave CNS, you will lose a resource that will, that you will find very, very hard to replace. I hope you take a good look at what the problem is and come out favorably for Coach Bennett. That's all I have to say.
Bill Bradley?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I guess I know most of you. My name is Bill Bradley, I live at 6340 ASA Eastwood here in Cicero, and I'm a retired English teacher for 34 years here in this district. And for 14 years, I served as Kerry Bennett's JV softball coach. I'm here to speak on behalf of my longtime friend and associate Kerry Bennett. To be perfectly blunt with you, you've committed an egregious error by dismissing Kerry for what I deem unfounded charges. This leads me to ask a number of questions of the Board, the Superintendent, and the various district officials involved in this firing. One, and they are in random order, there's no logic probably to them, but bear with me. Did the Board meet an executive session with Kerry Bennett in attendance to confront him with the charges you have leveled? Two, if not, who then conducted the investigation into Kerry's alleged misdeeds? Three, why weren't the two assistant varsity softball coaches interviewed? Four, why weren't various varsity softball players interviewed? Five, why then was the junior varsity coach, the present coach, the only coach given an interview, as far as we know? I can assure you that during my 14 years that I spent as Kerry's junior varsity coach, I was not privy to the events, practices, difficulties that were part of the varsity program. I would not have been one to interview if you wanted firsthand knowledge of any problems with Kerry. Six, did any of you Board members take it upon yourself to call Mr. Bennett and ask him his side of the story? If you didn't, why did you agree to dismiss a man who has given 30 years of his life to CNS softball? He made softball in this area, in case any of you didn't know. It was a nothing prior to Kerry coming onboard, he raised it to the level that we have today. Did you have no respect for Kerry and his achievements? Did you consider him guilty in the face of a cursory investigation at best? Finally, how did the Board reach the decision to fire Kerry Bennett? Did you vote via the internet? Was it a voice vote via the telephone? Did you meet as a group to consider the charges then to vote? Ladies and gentlemen, we deserve to know how you made the decision to fire Kerry Bennett. We know that he was never allowed to meet in a face-to-face interview with a Superintendent, and my question is, why not? How was the information regarding Kerry accumulated? How long did your investigation take? Who was interviewed? Was Kerry given appropriate time to either place in writing or to address you with his side of the charges? Do any of you know, with the exception of probably Catherine Sepharata-Brayton, who Kerry Bennett really is? And what he has done for this district and softball? For his players, for the youth of this district? If you had taken the time to find out, you would know that Kerry is not capable of committing the misdeeds you charge him with committing. He is innocent of all charges and he must have his record cleared and his good name restored. Thank you.
Rick Gigliotti? Did I pronounce that correctly?
I'd like to pass around some pictures. The pictures that you'll be looking at, most of them were taken less than 24 hours before Ms. Paul decided to leave the team. And I think that you'll see in those pictures that she looks anything less than bullied. But good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Rick Gigliotti, I'm an assistant coach on the CNS varsity softball team. And I would like to speak about this Board's decision to not reinstate Coach Kerry Bennett as head softball coach at CNS. I would like to address some of the accusations by Jeff and Brittany Paul at the July 9th meeting of this Board from an insider's perspective. According to the Pauls, the coaching staff was made aware of her decision to attend the ball in early May. The truth is that two players had informed Coach Bennett of that possibility and he said that he would look into it. When Ms. Paul was asked, her answer was always, "I'm undecided, I'm not sure," it was that sort of thing. All the way to the state championship, we were hopeful that she would decide to remain with the team. Coach Bennett's response was always the same, however, whenever it came up in a conversation, that he couldn't be mad at her because she was being, she had been put in a position to have to make a choice. Over the next several practices, the coaching staff made some decisions on how to handle a scenario that included making it to the state championship game and suddenly losing our first baseman. In the best interest of the team, because that's what coaches do, the decision was made to move Ms. Paul to the outfield and prepare someone else at first base. At the level that we play, it would be unfair for, to another player and to the team to just throw someone in that position, considering the magnitude of that game. When Ms. Paul joined the varsity team, she played in the outfield, so it just seemed natural. She never lost her starting spot, she actually strengthened the outfield, thus making the team better. Just because she played first up to that point does not mean that she owned the position, it's what made the team best at the time. It seems that after the move to the outfield, that things heated up with the Pauls going on the offensive. Because in their mind, she was being punished with really no regard to the team. But to Coach Bennett's credit, he made it clear to the team that the ball, that the ball was not to be discussed and that they were to focus on the task at hand, and that was winning another state title for Cicero or Syracuse. Also, to the coach's credit, the whole situation was not widely known because he instructed the team to stay focused and to not discuss it. I could go on and on about specific instances and events, but time doesn't allow for that. But players were accused of bullying and harassment at practice, I can say that it's just not true. Practices were business as usual, and I think that in Ms. Paul's heart, she knows that to be true. If some kids let their emotions get the best of them after practice, we have no knowledge of that, and where does a coach's responsibility end? I have plenty of pictures, by the way, showing her enjoying herself with the teammates that she is accused of bullying. In fact, if she was bullied, about an hour after she had quit the team, she had sent a tweet to the team that says, "Bring home that state title, love you girls." It was suggested that her car was vandalized by softball players. Someone has come forward, we've got information, people have come forward to say that it was a prank by classmates and it had nothing to do with softball. Were accused of humiliating her at the banquet. She didn't attend it and she was never mentioned at the banquet because she quit the team. If you're, if you're not in attendance and you're not mentioned, where's the humiliation? Unfortunately, Coach Bennett was put in the middle of a minefield trying to mediate this situation, and a child was put in a position to have to make a decision that I'm sure she didn't want to have to make because of a lack of planning by the very school that we represent. Coach Bennett, however, was the only one looking out for the good of the team. Dr. Dice, you said that you made your decision based on the best interest of the softball program and its students. I respectfully ask, have you ever attended a softball game, a CNS softball game? I would ask you to reinstate Coach Bennett and treat yourself to a CNS softball game because we're pretty darn good. And that's because of Coach Bennett's leadership and his commitment to excellence, which by the way, has been on our uniform since 1989. Our games are a celeb- Our games are a celebration of music, dance, enthusiasm, skill, athleticism by your scholar athletes. This is not a program that's out of control as it's been portrayed. It seems to me that simple common sense dictates a very thorough investigation into exactly what happened if you're considering the termination of a 30-year loyal veteran coach. What was done was ill-prepared and incomplete. Not a single varsity coach or player was interviewed during this investigation. I looked up the definition of a quitter, it's one who leaves a job before it's completed or one who gives up. Ms. Paul left us before the job was done, she quit on her team and on CNS. You should all know that we are not gonna quit on Coach Bennett. We won't stop until you reconsider writing this wrong because that's what a team does. Thank you.
Kim Schweitzer-Opperly?
Hello, and thank you for letting me talk with you tonight. I'm Kim Schweitzer-Opperly, the assistant coach alongside Mr. Bennett for the past three years, as well as a former player of his. The girls often find it much easier to talk in front of me and I can hear more than they often know. It's my duty to tell you what our team had to endure this season, and I have so much to say, but only a few short moments to tell you. Mr. Bennett's created a program that he defines as a commitment to excellence. He would never allow any nonsense to occur under his watch. There's constant reference to Brittany about the environment she was forced to live in. However, our team has accusations against them of things they have never done. And references to Mr. Bennett and things that were beyond his responsibility. Did I find out, did I find out the words were said between Brittany and teammates outside of practice? Yes. But words outside of games, practices, and team functions between girls who were concerned about their team and were provoked by Brittany. During practices, the girls ignored her behavior. The problem is that everyone has heard what Brittany has alleged, but no one has discussed what Brittany said or did. Mr. Bennett met with the girls on multiple occasions and finally made it clear that there is no nonsense out of practice whether they are antagonized or not. They're to keep working one game at a time and keep their eye on the goal. Now Brittany abandoned her team prior to states, and it was clear she was playing for herself and not worrying about her outcomes, making comments that would make any athlete upset. There's no I in team, but she made sure that there was throughout the entire season. Here are some, but not all, situations where Brittany antagonized teammates or criticized decisions made during the season. Teammates concerned about team morale told me on multiple occasions about Brittany's feet being out the door, making comments about hoping they'd lose, how they'd never make it to states because they had already lost too many games, and referring to ball just to make the girls upset, and also using seniority to our advantage. Brittany made it clear she was not happy with her move from first to center field as her new position. Mr. Bennett explained, "It makes us a stronger team and I have to make sure we are all prepared. I wish I would have made this a lot sooner." She felt it was a punishment and made comments to her teammates about it being a weak and lesser position and was too good to play in the outfield. She also told them, "We have to make it to states first." True, but again, Mr. Bennett- True, but again, Mr. Bennett was taking care of this. But since when is it okay for a player or a parent to question a coach's decision on And since when are we entitled to that position? This brings us to states. Brittany had been flaunting ball in front of her team's face and antagonizing them all season. After winning the semifinal game, Brittany packed her bag prior to our meeting. The girls were crying, as was Brittany. The girls hugged her and kept repeating, "Please don't go. You don't have to leave. We want to win this game with everyone here." Does this seem like a team and coaches that did not appreciate Brittany? Absolutely not. I saw the tears fall from their cheeks and disbelief on their faces that she had quit on them. She had made it to ball with her other three teammates who made it there at almost the same time as she did, as well as played in that game, but she didn't. All she left them was a tweet from Twitter and pictures of herself getting ready for ball, as if she had totally forgotten what she had done. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle DiTotta, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a former player and assistant coach of Mr. Bennett, and I was a member of the 1989 state championship team. I would like to describe to you the character of a man many of us have called coach, mentor, and friend. Mr. Bennett has devoted his life to developing young student athletes into fierce competitors. He instilled into his student athletes integrity, teamwork, self-confidence, both on and off the field. Like any great coach and mentor, he shared his love of the game, knowledge, and ideals with us. My teammates and myself understood that being part of a team, you had to work together to achieve your goal. You had to be willing to adjust your personal interests to fit the team, because everyone plays a different role in a team's success. Mr. Bennett used to say that being part of a team was like being part of a family. A family who I have learned over the past week and a half will protect and stand up for one another. As an assistant coach, I was taught that if your goal was to have every player and the team to be successful, you had to create a learning environment that would involve intense training, but at the same time, encourage players to strive to do their best. It was understood it was important to allow players to express their concerns to their coaches and each other, but there existed an understanding that the coach had the ultimate responsibility of making decisions that are in the best interest of the team. Mr. Bennett encouraged his student athletes to set goals academically, personally, and athletically. He assisted my teammates and me by offering constructive criticism while providing recognition of our accomplishments when we attained our individual and team goals. This is the intense but positive environment that Mr. Bennett established every year I played for and coached with him. Mr. Bennett always told me that nothing is ever handed to you. You have to work for it. It takes hard work and dedication to succeed both in sports and in life. Mr. Bennett taught us, "You must earn respect. It is not given to you." He instilled in us that you should treat others as you would like to be treated. He helped me to believe in my abilities and myself, something I was lacking when I met him. I was taught that to be a effective leader, you have to show exemplary character, confidence, enthusiasm, and to be committed to excellence. The principles Mr. Bennett instilled in me reached far beyond the softball field. When it was time to move on to the next chapter of my life, he said, "Sometimes life will challenge you, even disappoint you, but you need to dig deep within yourself and find the strength to overcome the obstacles and move forward." Remembering his words and lessons helped me to become a strong, confident, and independent woman. It enabled me to be successful in my career as a leader and a team player, to be a person others look to for advice and guidance, and above all, maintain integrity in everything I do. Now I am taking these life lessons, and I'm passing them on to my daughters, in the hope that they will choose to live their lives with these same values and beliefs. This is the influence that Mr. Bennett has had on my life. There are hundreds of other women's lives he has impacted in these positive ways over the past 30 years. I hope you can all find it within yourselves to reconsider and possibly recant your decision, so more student athletes can have the same opportunity so many of us were fortunate to have: an incredible coach, a nurturing mentor, and a friend. I appreciate the opportunity you have given us to express what an incredible role model Mr. Bennett was to me, and how he positively impacted my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Jo Marie Mariani?
Good evening. My name is Jo Marie Mariani, and I am a 1991 graduate of CNS. I was a member of its varsity softball program for four years, including the program's first state championship in 1989. I attended college on a softball scholarship, am a teacher in a neighboring district, and a Cicerone resident. Recently, I watched with interest the video of a player and her father and their presentation to the Board of Education. In it, they levied a number of allegations involving the term "bullying." And when I say "bullying," I say it with quotes around it. I do so because, one, it's highly questionable whether some of these allegations rise to the level of bullying, and, two, because as an educator, I am fully aware that certain words, like bullying, racism, harassment, ignite great emotion in administrators and cause them to react as well they should. In this respect, I believe their use of bullying in their allegations was a very thought-out, conscious decision, designed to pressure the board members into giving the accusers their utmost consideration. The athlete who testified actually issued a veiled threat when she said, "What will happen when such allegations are brought again against the same people, and it is discovered you had a chance to take action and chose not to?" A fair statement in and of itself, however, to simply label an action or actions as bullying is not enough. A thorough investigation with direct interviews of all parties named or involved is warranted. Interestingly, since that presentation, multiple press reports have brought to light that the allegations brought against Mr. Bennett, such as the car incident, the letter, the photo, were not committed by him, his staff, or his players, and that he had no knowledge of these events. The allegations were clever mistruths bordering on bald-faced lies. For this reason, amongst others, the people that came here tonight are outraged. Because of these mistruths, our beloved coach's good name has been tainted, and his incredible 30-year legacy has been trampled upon. Those of us that earned the honor of playing for him are carrying very heavy hearts indeed. We invested our time, sweat, and devotion for this program to bring great honor to our alma mater. We have been proud to say that we earned varsity letters in softball at CNS, because in the New York State softball community, our program is legendary. And the man who built this great program, who through this program taught us so much about life, may no longer even be associated with its proud reputation? Being the good people that you are, I know by now you must realize your decision, well-intended as it may have been, was not made with all of the facts. New questions have developed, new voices have been heard, and in order to right an obvious wrong, you can reach but one conclusion: that the investigation failed to uncover all the facts, that more investigation is necessary, and many questions remain unanswered. I will close by citing one fact: the women of this program were taught to never give up. Everyone in this room should know that we will not give up now. We learned about life from softball and about softball from Kerry Bennett. What we have been taught has served us well. We will not abandon those lessons, nor the mentor that taught them to us. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
My name is Sheri Steppenbeck. I am a proud CNS graduate from the class of 1999. I stand before you tonight as an educator, head varsity softball coach, and former CNS softball player. There are hundreds of athletes, many whom are here tonight, who had the privilege to play for Coach Bennett. Tonight, I speak on behalf of all of us about the profound impact he had on our lives. I always knew that Coach Bennett was an incredible coach with a wealth of softball knowledge. As I got older, I realized that what I learned from Coach went far beyond the diamond. We learned what it meant to be a true team. We picked each other up when someone needed it. We held each other accountable for our actions. We pushed each other to get better, and we cared about one another beyond balls and strikes. These lessons were so intensely instilled in us that we didn't realize it was happening until we got older and were able to look back through eyes that had endured more life experiences. We created bonds that are still strong today, as is evident in light of recent events. Coach Bennett gave me the guidance, along with many others, to help me get into college and afforded me the opportunity to play softball at Ithaca College. I am now a middle school teacher and have chosen to follow Coach Bennett's footsteps as a head varsity softball coach. When my athletic director asked me, "Which coach from your past has had the biggest positive impact on you?", I responded, "Coach Bennett, my high school softball coach." With each practice that passes, I do my best to instill in my athletes the life lessons Coach Bennett taught me. Coach Bennett has one of the best qualities that any athlete can ask for in a coach: he was fair. He understood his athletes and gave each athlete what they needed. He was tough, and yet we never doubted that he cared. One cannot look at the incredible success CNS softball has had over the last 30 years and not see that there is a clear correlation between this success and Coach Bennett. He not only had talented players, but he created talent, and he created opportunities for so many more athletes. Any person can coach, but only a very few special people can have the success that Coach Bennett has had. Successful coaching goes far beyond game knowledge and wins and losses. It's knowing your athletes and caring for each as individuals. After all, isn't that what education is all about? If you had taken even a few moments to get to know this man, his passion for the game and true concern for his athletes would have been evident. You have single-handedly gotten rid of one of North Syracuse Central School District's best assets. I played for one of Coach Bennett's state championship-winning teams. While that feeling is one that will never fade, it is all the lessons I have stated above that I remember most clearly. As you look around tonight, and with the outpouring of letters, phone calls, and emails that you have received in support of Coach Bennett, you will see that I am not alone in my experiences or how I feel about the tremendous impact Coach Bennett had on my life. If you take nothing else from me before you tonight, please understand that there are hundreds of grown women who have Coach Kerry Bennett to thank for being successful mothers, sisters, daughters, and aunts. But even more importantly, I sincerely thank Coach Bennett for teaching me to be a strong, confident woman that is now guiding the way for young athletes of my own. Thank you.
Good evening, and I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephanie Mix, and I graduated from CNS in 2008. Just this May, I graduated from UMass Amherst, where I had the privilege to play NCAA Division I softball. I am speaking right now to share with you the story of how I was able to become a D1 softball player, receiving a scholarship from one of the strongest programs in the Northeast, and to recognize the man who helped me most along the way and made it all possible. As an eighth grader, Mr. Bennett recognized that I had a lot of speed, but also a lot of raw talent. He made me believe that if I worked hard, I could really go far with softball. I had a whole lot to learn, and I needed someone who was willing to work with me year in and year out to teach me everything they knew about the game, and that he did. He turned me into a slap hitter, something that is not easily done and requires a lot of time and education on both the coach and the player's part. It turned out to be the best decision I ever made. I could never thank him enough for giving me that opportunity. It was not until college when I saw my teammates coming from all different high school and travel ball coaches that I realized what an advantageous position Mr. Bennett had put me in. I had seen almost all of the hitting techniques and drills prior to college, and we had top-of-the-line hitting machines and video technology. I was one of very few girls on a large team that had the opportunity to experience all of these things as a high school student, and again, I would have never had these advantages were it not for Mr. Bennett's generosity, dedication, and willingness to go above and beyond the minimum requirements to be a coach. Mr. Bennett not only taught me the physical aspects of the game, but a lot about mentality, hard work, and commitment, which are all things that are not only used on the softball field, but in life in general. In terms of hard work, he taught by example. If you were willing to put in the work, so was he. If you needed to work on something, he would have made himself available at any time imaginable to help you. Finally, he taught me a lot about commitment, and that sometimes it meant sacrifice. Thank goodness he prepared me in this way, because I had to make a choice to miss my college graduation for the NCAA tournament, and I'm sure I'll have many similarly tough, if not tougher, decisions to make in life. It was not until after my four years of college that I realized how fortunate I was to have Mr. Bennett as a high school coach. This is because I realized not only how much he knew about the game, but also how much he loved the game and how much he dedicated himself to it. Every decision he made was to make the team the best it could possibly be. Nothing was ever personal. He had the big picture in mind, just as many successful collegiate, just as any successful collegiate coach would. I do not think I could have asked for a coach who cared more about my success as a softball player, student, and human being in general. I insist that you reconsider the actions taken against Mr. Bennett and further investigate the situation. For someone who has given up so much of his own life for young softball players, it is just not fair that he was not even given a fighting chance. If it was not for this man, I would not be who I am or where I am today. It would be a shame to see other young athletes lose out on these same life-changing opportunities that this man so generously gave to me. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Philip DiAugustine. I am here to speak on behalf of Kerry Bennett as a friend, as a fellow varsity coach for the last 15 years, as a teacher, and as a community member. As the events of this past season continued to unfold this summer, I was shocked to hear that Mr. Bennett's tenure at North Syracuse had been ended based on allegations of fostering an atmosphere of bullying in regards to Ms. Paul. I do not believe Mr. Bennett would have knowingly allowed this to happen, nor would I associate with any coach who would. Mr. Bennett is highly regarded amongst his peers in this state. The last six years, the two of us have traveled to coaching clinics together. Often, the Olympic coaches are the keynote speakers. When they see Mr. Bennett, they come over and say hello, and share a story of two of their time together, when Mr. Bennett traveled out west and learned these techniques from the best colleges and brought them back here to Syracuse. When Ms. Paul announced that she may or may not play in the state championship, Coach Bennett was placed in a situation where he had to prepare the team for her possible absence, as any coach would do. He also had to keep the remaining girls focused on their goal of a state title amidst the uncertainty of having the dedication of one of their teammates. If the alleged bullying happened after the season, the coach has no more contact with the team to police such a matter. If it happened during the season, did the parents report this to the proper school administrators? If so, the bully should have been dealt with by removal from this team by the administration. Coaching is teaching with parents watching. My athletic directors have always offered the parents the opportunity to come to me and discuss their concerns with myself, with the athletic director, parents, player. Did such a meeting with a former athletic director ever take place? If so, what was agreed upon with the Pauls? If not, then it is an unacceptable gap in this communication. By becoming a member of a team, our students demonstrate they desire to be part of something bigger than themselves. With this in mind, going through the district's Athletic Code of Conduct, it states under philosophy, "It is the belief of the North Syracuse School District that once a student becomes a member of an athletic team, that the student assumes a major responsibility. The student is expected to maintain high standards, which are accepted along with the opportunity to represent the school. Under participation expectations, it should be understood that the North Syracuse School District believes that representing the school is a privilege and not a right. We expect students to be willing to meet higher standards of character and behavior." At the Edom Code of Conduct, there's a place for the parent and student to sign. They sign under the statement, "I have reviewed the student behavior code with my daughter, and we both understand the basic responsibilities involved..." and we both understand the basic responsibilities involved with the athletic program." By signing a code of conduct built on the terms "privilege", "high standards", "basic responsibilities", the district holds the belief that leaving the team before the end of the season is not acceptable, and by signing the document, the athlete and parents hold some culpability in their decision to leave the team. Since those of this community aren't privy to all the details of the investigation, we are looking for the peace of mind that all the accusations against Mr. Bennett were fully vetted before the final decision was made. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Roman. I'm a 1994 graduate of Cicero North Syracuse High School, a current resident of Cicero, and varsity softball coach for the Baldwinville School District. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board this evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of my coach, my mentor, and longtime friend Kerry Bennett. In the classroom, we teach about due process, and we discuss the Bill of Rights and the Constitution of the United States. We discuss a person's right to defend against accusations that are made against them. This is no court of law, but it is an educational institution. In my efforts to gather information regarding the 2012 CNS softball season, many district employees were happy to oblige, but only off the record, because they lacked tenure in the district. The community buzz is that our superintendent is surrounding herself with young, non-tenured staff who are forced to follow her directives for fear of losing their jobs. Couldn't this be considered bullying? On August 17th, during his follow-up meeting, Kerry Bennett asked Athletic Director Tim Bednarzki his thoughts about not being allowed to continue as the head varsity softball coach and human resource director, and that speech spoke for him, saying he has no thoughts about it. I find it ironic that Kerry Bennett is being portrayed as a bully in the newspaper headlines when adult employees in our district are not able to speak freely without fear of consequence. Tenure was created to ensure due process and protect the freedom of speech. One would hope that you would not need the label "tenure" in a position to be offered the simple liberties of due process. One would hope that 30 years of commitment, loyalty, and dedication to this district would be enough to minimally grant due process despite what the position requires you to do. Do you believe that because the law says you do not have to give a reason for firing someone, that it is the right thing to do? This is not a matter of legality. This is a matter of morality. Wouldn't you want to know, after 30 years of dedicating your life to something, why you were being fired? Since Kerry Bennett's firing on August 17th, the board has been presented with many pieces of information that would have been revealed had a more thorough investigation been conducted. It is my belief that this decision sets a dangerous precedent for coaches and teachers alike. With job cuts and class sizes increasing, this board has demonstrated that a student can allege something and have a good-standing employee with a long history and a good track record within the district fired without so much as confirming the allegations to be Tonight, numerous speakers have highlighted what this man has meant to the district and to the community alike over the span of 30 years. It appears to our community that very little was done by way of investigation from our superintendent or Board of Education. Tonight, we have posed questions about what this investigation was lacking. I asked the board directly, "Why didn't you refuse to vote on this matter and demand more information?" As a community, we do not understand why more time and more care was not taken in this decision. The school district failed this coach and its varsity softball team. The school district scheduled the senior ball for a date and time in conflict with the state championship game. The school district put both Kerry Bennett and the varsity softball players in the situation to make unnecessary choices. Yet, the school district has wiped its hands clean of this matter and thrown Kerry Bennett under the bus for something that could have been completely avoided. It is easy to sit and judge the actions or inactions of another person with the limited facts that you have. Please, take a moment to pause. I am asking that you revisit this investigation and consider information from both sides of the controversy. As a community, we will not sit back and allow people who have given over 30 years of their life to a school district, as a coach and a schoolteacher tossed aside with reckless abandon. This board has an obligation to our community to keep this administration in check. At election time, we voted for you to be our voice. Kerry Bennett deserves to have this matter credibly investigated and be afforded the opportunity to be heard. This decision needs to be revisited and rectified. Thank you.
I want to first assure everyone here that the many emails and letters and information that's been given and sent to us has been reviewed by and read by each and every one of the nine board members and also by the superintendent. I want to assure you that we've read all the information. Speaking on behalf of the board, I have to tell you that we realize and acknowledge that everyone will not agree with every decision that we make. Some people will not agree with any decision that we make. Still, we also have to acknowledge the fact that it's frustrating that we cannot discuss specifics and answer specific questions relative to any issue, this one included, because of the privacy issues that shield both student and personnel information. I can tell you that I've been on the board for 20 years now. There are board members that have been on a considerable amount longer than I've been on, and some shorter, but I can tell you in the past and in the present that the people that do the investigations for our school district provide complete, thorough, and And we are given the results of those investigations. We are also given possible options of actions to take. We include our counsel when we deliberate on any such matter, as we did in this case, and we review everything that we have and all of the information, and then we make a determination based on that. And it is in this, based on the information received and based on all of the facts that we have had, we decided to not reappoint Coach Bennett. I have to make it clear to you that, you know, we deliberated very, very cautiously. We took everything into consideration. We didn't rush to judgment in this fact. You know, it comes down to the fact that the adults in our community, coaches, teachers, parents, us, we're governed by law. We're governed, in some cases, by contract, and we're governed by school policy. And in that, we are responsible for the well-being of all of our children when we are dealing with them, when we are teaching them, when we are interacting with them. The school district, the Board of Education, has a zero tolerance for bullying of any kind, any shape, any form, any place, and any time. And based on that, we can't deviate from this. We can't deviate from the laws and policies that are put forward. And as we have stated, we have deliberated, and we've made our decision, and we're not going to revisit that decision. Well, we have the facts that we needed to make the decision, and we made the decision. And that's all we'll say, and that's it.
You've got a long road to go with setting that precedent.
That's it.
Your decision stays. Based on nothing, there was no bullying, you have no right to make that decision.
Yes, we do. At this point, we continue with the meeting. You're welcome to stay if you like.
We'll make one year.
Well, that's fine. That's your prerogative. So, that's it.
How can you make that decision without discussing after 10 people just talked? You haven't even discussed with these people.
That is the decision.
After 10 people just talked, you didn't even say anything.
That is the decision, and that is it. That portion of the meeting is over. If you want to speak again, you can speak at the next meeting. You're invited to speak.
Do we have any committee reports or comments?
I have some comments.
Go ahead.
How do you people sleep at night? I don't get it.
Okay.
These athletes lied. You ruined it.
Didn't deliberate and talk about what we've talked about.
We will clear the room if we have to. We will clear the room if we have to.
Never even vouched on one of our games. Never even saw him coach once.
Are we not being bullied right now?
All right. I have a couple of things that have happened in our school district. The first thing I want to tell board members is the North Syracuse Education Foundation Gala will be at the Lakeshore Yacht and Country Club on November 3rd, and I would hope that you would attend, because our former Vice President Tony Broccoli will be honored along with Bill and Neela Brown. I gave each of you a special program, that a choral concert was at Andrews Memorial Church on August 17th. This is a very special ceremony in that our students this summer volunteered to work as a chorus to give a special program at Andrews Memorial -- or not Andrews, excuse me, Cicero Methodist Church to honor a teacher that passed away this year, Marty Campbell. They raised $1,000, and they will be getting a scholarship in memory of Marty, so I gave each of you that. Another thing that Kay and I went to on August 22nd was the football team, team building at Arrowhead Lodge for all of the CNS football teams. Awesome program with all the coaches and players and parents ready for the new season. The other thing I gave you was the eighth-grade orientation that Connie Terros did. I thought it was an awesome program. I thought doubled the number of parents went to this, which I think is a good sign for the junior high. I gave you that. But I think what we need to really honor is that we were fortunate to have a World Series Babe Ruth team ages 16 to 18 from Central New York go to the World Series and to win. And two of those students came from our school district. We should be very, very proud. That's Eric Hamilton and Joe Polkantowski. Then I have a favor of Dr. Dice and her team. At the end, I have always go, ask you a favor. We did get something from Connie on core curriculum and also on student learning objectives, but I think this board would probably like to see a presentation from your administrators on core curriculum, because it's really starting up this fall, and also on student learning objectives. If maybe you come before the board and give us something on that, I would appreciate it. I don't know about other people, but I would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob.
You want this paper, Ben?
Anyone else?
I didn't read what you said.
Dr. Dice? No comment. No comment?
Can I have one?
Yeah, sure.
I'm excited about the start of the school year. On the 4th, we have our opening day conference. We're going to have the commissioner here visiting in the morning, and we're looking forward to hearing what he has to say. We're also going to have a presentation that will focus on change and the change process. And so, we're really excited about some of the new things that we're going to be embarking on this school year. We also have completed interviews and are excited for our new team members to join us. I will wait till, I guess, the next board meeting when they're officially approved to acknowledge who they are, but thank you for the board members who sat on the committee, the interviewing committee. We are very excited to begin the business of what we're all here to do, which is to educate our children, and we look forward to providing you with a number of updates throughout the school year to focus on the improvements and the changes that we're making. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dice. Routine action items. Can I have a motion to take items A, B, C, and D as -- oh, A, B, C, D, and E as a group? George? Second, Sandy. Recommended action is to approve A, B, C, D, and E as submitted. Were there any questions or discussion? No? Recommended action to approve? All in favor? That's unanimous. Consideration of contract awards. Fire alarm testing and inspection reference, contract number 2013-06. Bid for fire alarm testing and inspection were opened on Tuesday, August 21st, 2012, representing the district. At the opening were John Ward of Maintenance and Operation and Patty Marlowe and Dave Kasuf of the Business Office. Results of bids were that Red Hawk Fire and Safety was the lowest bidder, meeting the recommendations and specifications. Were there any questions on that? Recommended action is to award contract 2013-06 to Red Hawk Fire 7 Safety in the amount of $16,320 is the lowest responsible bidder meeting the specifications. Motion? Michael Donofrio, second. Sandy DeBianco, all in favor? That's unanimous. Discussion items. First is Regents' results.
Donna Marie Norton and I are going to just quickly go through the June Regents' results for the high school. And you have all of this, I believe, in color. Ours is black and white, but we're going to start with English. As we know, English is an 11th grade Regents' exam. As you can see, in the last three years, we've had a decline, but the main reason for that is because we now mass test in January, and so we have fewer and fewer students taking that Regents' exam in June. What you'll see on the three-year trend is as it declines, our mastery level every year has gone up in June. And then, this is the January results where we've shown greater mastery, where students scored between 85 and 100 on the Regents' exam. And that continues to remain steady and strong, and we're very proud of the students when they mass test in January. With the SLO coming into play, though, we might have to move that back to a June Regents' exam.
No, we don't want to do that.
Right. We might have to. That's okay. The U.S. history, this is the three-year trend for the U.S. history. We stay pretty much consistent between a '90 and a '94 over the last three years, and as you'll see, the mastery level stays relatively about the same as compared to where it's been. Our mastery score is about the same as our students that score between 65 and 84, but we're always trying to improve that mastery level with our students. Our Global History Exam, this year, the Global History Exam was one of the hardest Regents' exams we've had in a long time. Carol can tell you, she helped score, where they used some of Where they used some of different vocabulary that our students were not quite familiar with and they tested some very minute details that really aren't even gone over in the textbook. But our students held their own in that Regents exam and they did fairly well. And as you can see, our mastery level dipped a little bit as compared to the years in the past, but as I said, it was a very difficult exam this year for our students.
Do you have comparison of our results with the statewide results?
Yes, we have those for, yes, we do.
Could you share those with us down the road? Thank you.
At any point, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Living environment, our three-year trend is we stay steady there with our students right above 95 to 96, 97 percentage. And then the mastery, our students are quite proficient in the living environment scores. Chemistry has shown promise over the last three years. We've grown a little bit each year with the gains that we're making in common curriculum and those pieces that the teachers are aligning the curriculum and whatnot. So we're showing improvement there and we hope to continue to see a rise there. What you will see, though, is our mastery level is not as high as the students that score, that pass the Regents exam. So we are working to improve that level. Well, actually, one of the things, Bob, is this next year, because of the new accelerated program, our chemistry numbers are going to balloon. So in the last couple of years, our chemistry numbers have grown quite a bit. And so we've had to outfit some different rooms at the high school to provide for the chemistry classes. So those numbers have grown and increased. Physics, right now, is where the accelerated program is. So you see that dip a little bit, but it was a deeper pool. And the junior high students are taking accelerated physics. So they're not in this population, which is why you see the decrease there. But the chemistry is now going to hit us and that's going to be a balloon in population in the next couple of years. And then our physics results, again, our sciences, we are working on continuing to raise our mastery level, but you'll see they're all about the 20, 25% range of our students getting mastery in those levels. We did. Trigonometry continues to be a bit of a hardship for our students and our passing rate. However, we're not alone in that. On Inoga County, it's a continuously difficult exam and the amount of curriculum that the teachers have to cover in the year is extremely, it's very hard, it's very fast-paced. And so there's not a lot of time for review and catch-up in that course. So we're continuing to work on trying to figure out the best practices that are there. And we're trying to grow this year our STEM program to match sciences and technologies in math at the high school level. And so we're hoping that will help improve these, the math and the science exams as well. Absolutely, absolutely.
A lot of students in our district, a lot of students in our district taking this test.
Yes, we do.
Unlike some other school districts, I believe.
Yes, we do. We continue to challenge our students to take the harder level math to try and get that advanced diploma.
Overall, in the region, the passing rate is 69%. So, you know, we're very close to the Regents score and we do push our kids to take this exam because this is necessary for the advanced designation diploma. It is not necessary for the plain Regents diploma.
I understand.
We'll share. So as you can see, that's how the trigonometry results break out with about 26% of our students attaining mastery and then 37%. So combined, about 63%, like I said, passing that regions. The geometry regions has dipped a little bit in the past couple of years and I think that's because of where we do the accelerated students. They're at the junior highs, so you take that population out and that becomes a little bit lower in terms of how many students actually take the exam at the high school level and then what the average rate is. And our mastery level here is a little bit lower than we would like it to be, so we're growing with that. But the fact that we have 61% of our students passing the exam is, that's great for us and the region. Do you have any questions for us?
What's the situation, Donna Marie, with January Regents and summer Regents? We don't really know.
I haven't heard anything. Thanks. We have seen draft Regents schedules for January, which makes us feel positive that there should be January Regents. But as you might recall or might not recall, last year it was sort of a rescue attempt, you know, by some wealthier individuals to pay the cost, actually, of giving the January Regents exams. So, you know, they're a little unsure. We're certainly hoping that they're given because it is that extra opportunity for students to take an exam and to pass it.
When will we, no, I mean, in terms of planning and guidance?
Sandy, from your lips to the Commissioner's ears.
Dan just gave me the go-ahead that the January Regents are a go. The schedule is published.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Not for all exams, right?
No, I understand, but for the math. We will have the math, we will have the LA and...
We can assume the big five, right? We can assume it's going to be the five that the students need to graduate.
The five core.
Yep, the five core. Yes.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, discussion action items. Resolution to establish the tax rate. Mr.?
Good evening. I'm going to try to move quickly and give you an overview. I think you have the documents in front of you. On the, establishing the tax rates, there's a sheet that shows them. They came in basically about 2 cents higher than what we had predicted in the springtime, 21.91 and up to $21.93, 21.92, up to $21.94. And a similar change in clay, just slightly different increase. So those are, those are the items that we have. And then we have, you have in front of you the calculations, which are the, similar to what we've done other years. Are there questions?
Hold on. What was your question, Kay? They're not 100% assessment. I believe their equalization rate changes where Cicero and Salina is 100% assessment. That's why.
All right. Clay's rate changed from 432 to 434, which seems like a very slight change, but it did, you know, make some differences.
My question is Cicero and Salina, the percentage increase went up. Is that above the 2% cap that we were told that we needed to have? And if it is, is this allowable? See, my question is, when we set, when we set the tax percentage back in March and April, you know, we had to keep it below a certain level, percentage level. I'm not sure if this didn't pop above it.
To the best of my knowledge, that increase has to do with the total district rather than any one specific town. So this would not have violated that.
So you averaged the three out?
Yeah.
And I think when it's based on assessment.
Right, and we have no control over that.
No, I know we don't have any controls.
It has to be the overall...
So it's really what we do in April and March is what we do. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay.
Do I need to wait for you to take anything at this time?
You might as well talk about them and vote on them.
I'll go through all of them.
Yep.
Okay, then the authorization of the warrants is a resolution that you do each year. And we have the warrants that are with Connie to be signed after you have acted on those. The tax collection deposit agreement is an agreement that we make with each of the three towns in terms of how they deal with receiving the checks, as in they receive the interest on that money while it's in their hands and then forward it to us and they forward it once a week.
Anybody have any questions on any of those A, B, C, or D, or A, B, or C? Okay, the recommended action is to establish the tax rates. Be it resolved that the Board of Education has been authorized by the voters at the annual meeting of the North Syracuse Central School District held on May 15th, 2012, to expend the sum of $138,000, $138,771 and $201 and to levy the necessary tax for the 2012, 2013 school year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education set the equalized tax rates by the town and confirm the extension of the taxes totaling $75,876, $876,961 plus $400,860 library appointment as detailed. Do I have a motion? Bob made the motion, second Michael D'Onofrio, and we have to do a roll call? Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, motion carried. Authorization of warrants. The recommended action is to approve the resolution authorizing the tax warrants. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby confirms the assessment rolls for the 2012, 2013 collection, school years received from the towns of Clay, Cicero, and Salina, and authorize the warrants for collection of taxes being annexed to these same assessment rolls and therefore be it further resolved that the collectors in the above towns be authorized and required to collect the taxes in accordance with the confirmed tax rolls. Sandy, second? George, all in favor? That's unanimous. Tax collection deposit agreement, be it resolved that between the time of collection and the statutory time for deposit to the town and school district, school taxes for the 2012, 2013 school year received by the receiver of taxes in the towns of Clay, Cicero, and Salina may be deposited into the receiver in an interest-bearing account. The interest thereon to be credited to the respective towns' general fund and said town shall not be entitled to charge the district for services in connection with the collection of such school taxes. Second, Mike D'Onofrio, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Okay, status of the fund balance and reserves, David.
Okay, the status of the fund balance is that it has diminished this year to about $2.6 million. And Don has a sentence in the recommendation says, "I recommend that we target 3% or approximately $4.2 million to aim for in the future years. Ideally, we would increase our fund balance by approximately $1.6 million over the next few years. Right now, we're at about a 1.9% of our budget for the fund balance. The state allows 4%."
We're probably at the lowest that we've been in many, many...
I think we're the lowest we've been since I've been here.
Ever.
And just to reiterate, we did use some of that fund balance, or we have in the last couple of budget seasons, to offset the raising of the taxes. So it is our intent and hope that we can build that fund balance. We are a firm believer of spending all of the money that is in our budget. We usually spend 99.999% of it and we don't ask the taxpayers for any more than what we would spend in a year. So hence, the fact that we don't have millions of millions and millions of dollars in our reserve fund balance. So with that, the recommended action, if there, are there any questions? Bob, did you have a question?
I have, yeah. This always boggles me. All right, so basically, what did we use this year total amount for the fund balance? From the fund balance for our budget?
We used $1.6 million for the budget.
Okay, and you're proposing for next year?
75, $750,000 to be used for the, to offset the tax.
So basically, we are starting the budget year in the red already. We're going to have to fund the funds for this money, our budget next year. Am I correct?
Well, the $750,000 is taken into account when we reduce our current available fund balance to $2.6 million.
But in Bob's question is, once we use it, then we have to fund?
Once we use it, we'll be at $2.6 million.
Yeah, and what you're basically, and I have to make a point to go see Don about this. I apologize. But basically, you're saying we're not going to touch this next year for our budget. Am I correct or not?
The $2.6 won't be touched for our budget.
You're planning the 750, the 2.6 is what won't be touched.
Okay.
Right. Right, and we're planning on trying to build it up over the next...
Okay, okay, all right.
What, how many years?
I need to go in and see Mr. Keegan.
Over the next few years. Any other questions on that?
And the reserves, we, you'll note that they've decreased somewhat and some have stayed approximately where they were. And Don does include a sentence, "Although the district needs to consider increases to our reserves during 2012, 13." I believe that our reserves at June 30, 2012 are appropriate in accordance with GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board. But he does hope, as we all do, I think, to see those reserves increase somewhat in the next couple of years.
Do we need to vote on this? We don't need to vote, correct? That's an information?
I believe that was just an...
Okay, all right. Right, proposed recommendation to increase workers' compensation reserve.
Our current reserve for workers' comp is 1.14 or 1.15 million. And Don's recommendation is that, I believe, we should increase our reserve by $150,000 to 1.3 million. And that will result in a reduction of our fund balance of $150,000 as of the date that the Board approves that change. And he's drafted a resolution if you want to consider it at this time.
Do we have any questions on that? Does he have a, is, do we have a motion to accept that?
Yeah, do you want me to read it?
Yeah, please do.
It says, "Resolved that the Board of Education, in response to reserve estimates prepared by POMCO, the Workers' Compensation Plan Administrator, increased the Workers' Compensation Reserve, A814, by $150,000 from unassigned fund balance. Further, that the reserve will continue to be used to support payments for compensation benefits and other authorized expenditures of administering the Workers' Compensation Self-Insurance Program and that interest on such funds will accrue to the Workers' Compensation Reserve."
Any questions or further discussion? Recommended action is to approve that resolution as submitted. Motion, Sandy, second Bob, all in favor? That's unanimous also. Resolution to approve Bonn, Shenick, and King to intervene on the district's behalf in specific tax searchory matters. Each year, we're presented with various businesses, various people who wish to have their tax assessments revisited and lowered. It is a, there's a fund that we set aside every year for this purpose. There are certain instances where we retain counsel. Usually, in most cases, we retain counsel to represent us relative to these issues. And these two resolutions, the first one is to appoint Bonn, Shenick, and King to represent us in the matters listed in Schedule A under this column. Are there any questions on that? Don or Wayne would talk about that, but I think, does everyone understand what the tax searchory process is and what it does? Michael, what happens is essentially if a company feels that their assessment is too high, they petition to get their assessment lowered. And they usually...
Arbitrated.
Arbitrated. And we usually will have one of the law firms represent us relative to making the best deal at the most cost of for us. And we have that fund set aside so that we pay that out of a specific fund rather. That's what a searchory is. So if there are no questions, the recommended action is to approve Bonn, Shenick, and King to intervene on the district's behalf in specific tax searchory matters. Second, George, all in favor? Item G is a similar item. Again, we've got some very, very experienced and well-respected firms and attorneys that have expertise in certain searchory matters. So in item G, we are making a resolution to approve Ferrara, Frienza, Larison, Arnett, and Reed's PC to intervene on the district's behalf in specific tax searchory proceedings. Second, Michael Marizio, all in favor? That's unanimous also. Do we need an executive session before we take up personnel items, A, B, and/or C?
I have something to bring up. I don't know if now's the time before personnel. I want to thank Mr. Bowles for all of his work with class sizes.
I want to thank Mr. Bowles for all of his work with class sizes, and I want to thank my fellow board members for their action last meeting. However, looking at Mr. Bowles' class sizes, I am very, very worried about Roxborough Road Elementary. I see first grade up, so those teachers have 25 students. I think the majority, probably one of them has 24. That's, that's too many for first grade. Sandy, you've been in that classroom, and 25 kids in first grade is a lot different than 25 in fourth or fifth grade, and also second grade. I, I think, I really think this board needs to think about tonight. And also, we're looking at kindergarten at Smith Road and fifth grade at Gillette. I really think we need to make a decision. Mrs. Speech should be congratulated for all the work that she's done, the hours and hours and hours with placing of teachers. And I know this is not going to be good for her doing this, but I think we really need to look at these classes tonight and make a motion to add these sections. I don't know if now's the time to do it, or what the other board members feel. I know funding-wise, we've used our funds. I read Dr. Dice's information. However, we do have some monies, am I correct, Dr. Dice?
Yes.
From unemployment, because we'll be bringing people off unemployment. I just feel that he's added teachers to...
Do you have a recommendation, Bob, there?
It was a recommendation from Dan about adding sections and adding some special people. I, I also spoke to him.
All right, why don't I make a motion then, Pat? I'll make a motion that we add a first grade at Roxborough, second grade at Roxborough Elementary, a kindergarten section at Smith Road, and a fifth grade at Gillette Road Middle School.
And, and could, could we further state that next year in doing our planning and our budgeting, even though it's tough looking at it that end when we're trying to save all these dollars, that, that we are proactive? I would prefer to see us budget more positions than four, and then if we don't have to use them, God bless, we don't have to use them. But in the event, you know, but, but knowing that this has happened to us for the last four years, you know, we need to get a better handle on it, and we need to be proactive in, in putting those positions in. And then maybe we'll be in the position where we don't need them instead of, oh, my God, scrambling now and driving you crazy. Going to make that gray streak wider.
I need to amend my motion because I know Mrs. Speech would talk about this. With the added sections, we definitely need a special area. So, I'd make a motion to also add a .2 physical education teacher, .1 art teacher, and .1 music teacher, so that those classes are covered.
Basically, the recommendation that was made by Mr. Bowles.
Connie, did you get that? Because I think you were out of the room when Bob made the...
Pat, we prepared, we prepared the resolution today.
Okay.
After Mr. Bowles put his report in the Friday letter and assumed that you were going to give it some consideration. So, that, that is what Connie went to get.
Okay, cool. Great job. So, Bob made a motion. Do we have a second? Sandy, second Sandy?
Let, let George be the second.
George, second, all in favor? That's unanimous also.
Thank you.
Beautiful, thank you. Do we need an executive session before we take up personnel items A, B, and C? We do. Catherine, you'd like to make a motion? Okay, second. I'll make the second. All in favor? It's unanimous, and we'll be right back. I have a point to a chair.
Better tape than I have.
That's okay.
Did you try to call me today? First day of school.
Oh, was it?
Oh, how was it? I agree, because that was a concern.
My daughter's starting.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, somebody wanted to see it, right? Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, but is that, is that...
I think you can give that out, can't you?
Oh, maybe Connie does. I didn't think about that.
I cleaned it in your office.
But I'm not needed.
Oh, there you are. Can I call a store? Yeah, Sandy, you okay? Want me to wait for you?
All right.
That was good. We got, we broke up around 10:00.
Okay. We're back in session. Personnel items A, B, C, and D, is it a possibility that we can take those as a group?
Yeah.
Sandy first, Michael D'Onofrio second. Any questions or comments? Recommended action is to approve A, acknowledge B, and approve C as submitted. All in favor? Unanimous. I would like to make a motion that we move to executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with six district bargaining units to review one legal matter relative potential litigation, and to review the employment record of 13 individuals with action to follow on three employment matters. Second, Mike Marizio, all in favor? Unanimous, and we're adjourned.